Good evening. It is 6:30 PM and I am calling the Monday, October 26, 2020 Planning Commission Meeting to order. Tonight's Planning Commission Meeting is structured to allow virtual participation on Zoom or participation in person while following social distance and mask guidelines. Members of the public are welcome and encouraged to participate when invited throughout the meeting. If you are participating virtually and experience audio problems, we suggest you leave the Zoom meeting and then rejoin. This is usually fixed the. As usual, tonight's meeting is available live and recorded for later viewing on BCTV and on the city's website. If you are unable to participate this evening and would like to submit public testimony, I encourage you to email your comments to city staff or mail your comments directly to City Hall. You may participate in the meeting tonight online by going to zoom.us/join and typing in meeting ID 953-4079-1645. Once you are logged into the meeting, please use the chat feature to tell the moderator which item you wish to speak to. You may also call into the meeting at 651-372-8299 and enter meeting ID 953-4079-1645. Your call will be muted until there is an agenda item that contains a public hearing. I will provide further instruction and notify you when you may speak. Please note, there may be a slight delay due to the differences in technology. If speaking by phone, please mute your computer to avoid any feedback. And now on to our agenda, the first item on tonight's agenda is adoption of the agenda. Do any members of the Planning Commission have any changes to tonight's agenda?
Do not.
Staff, do you have any changes to the agenda?
No changes.
All right, seeing none, may I have a motion for adoption of the agenda?
So moved.
I second the motion.
All right, moved by Commissioner John and seconded by Commissioner Ward. And all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. And the motion carries. The next item is approval of the last meeting's minutes, which was September 28, 2020. Commissioners, do you have any changes to the minutes from the last meeting?
No changes.
Staff, any changes?
No changes from staff.
No changes. Seeing none, may I have a motion for adoption of the meeting minutes from September 28?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Ward, seconded by Commissioner John. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. And the motion carries. All right, on to the next item. We have a public hearing, which is an application of Patrick Emerson for a conditional use permit for detached accessory structure exceeding 1,000 square feet in the R1A zoning district located at 15480 Loop Road South. And tonight, Deb Garros, city planner, will be providing a presentation of this item. Ms. Garros.
Thank you, Commissioners. This is a public hearing this evening for a conditional use permit. And what the applicant is requesting is to have an accessory structure, detached accessory structure exceeding 1,000 square feet. The property is located in the R1A, which is our rural residential, single-family zoning district. The property is shown up on the screen. The property backs up to, or just to the west of the property is Murphy Hanahan Park Reserve. And then there are single-family, large acreage, single-family lots surrounding the development within the neighborhood. On this, this is an aerial photograph of the site. And the yellow box represents approximately where the accessory structure is proposed. There is a house and attached garage that were built in about 2017. And then this proposed accessory structure is proposed to be sited and have metal roofing to match the existing house. It is, it requires a conditional use permit because they want the building to be larger than 1,000 square feet. They're asking for a 1,200 square foot building. So 30 feet by 40 feet for all practical appearances, it will look like a garage. They've got a very long driveway into the site. It's about 300 feet. So there is plenty of room for parking of vehicles, et cetera. So we don't anticipate any particular issues with this. This would be the survey submitted with the application. It has been reviewed by the city engineer and our building inspections, fire departments, and police. There are no issues or objections that any of those departments have raised. This is the floor plan. Basically, what you'll have is the end wall, the 30-foot wide, will be facing the street. So it'll just have an overhead garage door and then an entry garage door facing the street. So that's how that will appear. They are proposing to have, as I said, metal roofing, which is the same as the existing house, and then pre-engineered siding, lap siding. From a staff perspective, one thing to note is that in the R1A zoning district, if you have a lot larger than two acres, you can actually have up to two detached accessory buildings. And so up to 2,000 square feet, 1,000 each. They are proposing one at 1,200 square feet. So we're looking at just a 200-foot, 200-square-foot addition. With that, the recommendation from staff is to, we recommend approval of the application subject to one item, and that be that the structure will need to be set back at least 10 feet from the south side property line. We believe that they can do that. Their driveway is beyond that, and they propose to line that up. It's just that we didn't have a specific certificate of survey showing, you know, the proposed building location and set that. We did receive one comment from another property owner that lives in southwest Burnsville. Her name is Sandy Duque, and she lives at 3112 Marcia Anne Lane. I believe that she may be either in attendance or looking on Zoom to make a comment on the application. If she's not, I can come back and indicate to Planning Commission what her item is. With that, we can stand for questions.
Very good, thanks, Ms. Garros. Commissioners, any questions? Yes, Commissioner Ward.
What's the normal accessory building setback for this property?
For accessory buildings, basically, it would be a 50-foot setback. So this is over 300 feet. The house and building were set very far back on the site. That would be from the front property line, and then the side property line is 10 feet.
Yeah, so, okay, so the condition at 10 feet from the south side yard line, that's the normal?
Yes.
Accessory building?
Yes.
Setback, okay, thank you.
That's correct.
Commissioner John.
You said on a two-acre lot, this is over two acres, they can have two accessory buildings, is that correct?
Yes, if you have a lot that's two or more acres, you can have up to two detached accessory buildings, 1,000 square foot each. So, yep, in this case, they're looking for one at 1,200 square feet.
Got it.
All right, any other questions, Commissioners? All right, I'm going to open the public hearing then at 6:38 PM. And I do understand that the applicant is joining us on Zoom. And so I'd like to allow Mr. Emerson the opportunity to discuss this project before we go to any other public members. So if we can get Mr. Emerson on, that would be great.
Can you hear me?
Yes, Mr. Emerson?
Sorry, I was muted. Yeah, the structure was just, I just wanted it a little bit wider. I was thinking about doing a 25 by 40. I do have a couple boats that I'd like to store that I normally keep up in Grand Rapids where a cabin is. And that was the reason for the additional width of five feet. I believe that the person who wanted to comment or make a comment today did contact me over the weekend, we had a discussion. I think her concern was around having animals structured there. And it's basically a garage for, I have a skid loader, I have a couple boats. Like I said, I meant, like I mentioned, I like to store there. And that's pretty much it. So I just, I just wanted the extra square feet. I don't ever plan on an additional building of, you know, 1,000 or 800 square feet at any time now or in the future. So that's pretty much the extent of my project. It's basically a garage to store some, some extra items I don't want to keep out in the cold.
All right, thank you, Mr. Emerson. If you would just stay in line for any questions.
Absolutely.
Questions, Commissioners?
No, I think he answered anything I had.
Okay, and I just want to clarify, the 25 by 40, is that what's existing? Because that's 1,000 square feet, so the additional?
That's what I was originally going to consider building. And then I wanted the additional 500, or five square feet on the, on the right to be additional, to make it 1,200 square feet. So my apologies, I was originally thinking 25 by 40 to go under the, or to be aligned with 1,000 square feet. It's just when I laid it all out of what I have and what I'm going to try to get in there, the extra five feet would be, would be really nice to have, and that's why I'm asking for the variance.
Okay, thank you for clarifying. Okay, and it does look like we have Ms. Duque on the Zoom as well. And so I'd like to open it up for her. If we do have anybody who's calling into this meeting, you can dial *9 to raise your hand if you'd like to speak. And at this time, if we can get it over to, sorry, Ms. Garros.
You would want to open the public hearing, and then we can take the public comments.
I did open the public.
Oh, you did, I'm sorry, I missed that.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
So Ms. Duque, if we can get her on as well.
Hello, are you able to hear me?
Yes.
Perfect. So I did speak with Patrick over the weekend, and my only concern on this was that it should not house any animals. I don't know if the city can recommend that or even enforce it. But I do want to be put on record that any building that goes in in this area, I am going to put my two cents in and restrict any animal containment that includes corrals, pig pens, stables, chicken coops, goat pens, whatever animals are being brought into this area. When I did speak with Patrick, I'm confident that that is not his purpose for this. And I do not have any objections to anything that has been discussed on that at all.
All right, thank you very much, Ms. Duque. And maybe we can get some clarification from city staff on those ordinance requirements as they currently exist. But do either of you have questions for Ms. Duque?
I do not.
Okay. Ms. Garros, can you help us understand just what the zoning requirements are for animals in a property like this?
Yes, in the R1A zoning district, which is commonly referred to as southwest Burnsville, this is the only district where you can have animals, such as horses, cows, you know, chickens, et cetera, as long as they are kept in a way where you have the proper housing, et cetera, for that. So that is a permitted use. If the applicant wanted to agree to that as a restriction, that could be included. But otherwise, it would be difficult to preclude somebody from having something that is permitted in the district.
Is that something that the restriction would follow ownership of the property?
Yes, it would.
Okay.
Yes, with the conditional use permit, it would, yes.
Mr. Emerson, is that something you would be open to as far as adding a restriction on this variance? I do know, or sorry, conditional use permit?
I have no problem with that whatsoever, it's fine.
Commissioners, any questions for Ms. Garros or anyone else at this point?
I'm sorry, I was closing the door. So animals are allowed in, in this zoning district?
Yes, the R1A zoning district is really the only district where you can have cattle or horses, cows, pigs, those, those types of animals. So if, if the applicant is willing to add the restriction to the conditional use permit, we can do that. Otherwise, I think it would be hard pressed to be able to support that because it is something that's permitted for anybody in the R1A zoning district.
That's what I was getting at, that, that it's, it's allowed. And so I don't know that we should be the ones to say you can't do it on this property, but the properties on, all around it could still do it, you know? And, you know, we're kind of relying on the applicant's, you know, statement that he's not interested in keeping animals there, and I believe him, and so there won't be animals there. But in that, I think it's a bigger, maybe a bigger issue if we're going to restrict that zoning type. It should be done kind of ordinance-wide, not just on a single property. You know what I mean?
Yeah, I'm concerned about the restriction following the property in perpetuity. I mean, you don't know, really, if Ms. Duque were to move or if Mr. Emerson were to move, what would the new property owners desire in an area where animals would be allowed? And I can totally understand Ms. Duque's point of view, having, you know, animals that close to her property. So I think the, I think the understanding, and maybe we can move this more to discussion after the, the public hearing. But I think that, you know, my thought at least is trying to go with the agreement and the understanding that they already have. Commissioner John?
I was just wondering if Mr. Emerson had any, any objections to the south side setback that the city is proposing?
The setback?
Yeah.
No, not at all. I wasn't planning on being that close anyways.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. So let's just see if we have anybody else who is wanting to speak to this item. I don't see anybody in the chambers here, and I don't believe we have anybody else on Zoom who does want to speak to this item. So Mr. Emerson, Ms. Duque, please bear with us here. I am going to close the public hearing at 6:47 and open up for discussion, further discussion from the commission members. Commissioner Ward?
I, you know, I don't have any issues with the recommendation. I think it's pretty straightforward, and I would be supportive of it. I just, I'm just gonna, I'm just, just, just gonna say that. So the condition is that the setback is at 10 feet, which is the standard condition for any accessory building. So we're really just kind of clarifying what, if that condition wasn't listed as a condition, it would still be kind of a condition of adding an accessory building to your property, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, so just clarifying what, what the standard zoning rules are. But great presentation, and I'm fully supportive of it.
Commissioner John?
Yeah, you know, I'm actually gonna make a motion. I agree with both you guys on the animal thing, as, you know, it is within the code. So we can't just have that one little island of non-code conformity anymore. So I think we'll just, I'm gonna make the recommendation as, as it's stated here. The, we recommended the city council approval of the CUP as presented and to allow the proposal of 1,200-square-foot accessory building to exceed the 1,000-square-foot standard, subject to the following condition. The structure will be set back at least 10 feet from the south side yard lot line.
All right, Commissioner John makes a motion. Do I have a second?
I will second the motion.
Commissioner Ward, seconds. Any further discussion? All right, all those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, say nay. And the motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Emerson. And this item will be on the November 2nd. It's going to be a Monday city council meeting, Monday, November 2nd, for final approval.
Okay, thank you.
Good night.
Thank you.
All right. So we are going to be moving on to agenda item number four, which is a public hearing, an application of the city of Burnsville for a zoning map amendment to rezone the listed parcels of land to the Transit Oriented Development Zoning District to align with the city code Title 10, Chapter 22D, Transit Oriented Development District. Ms. Madden, our city planner, will also now be providing a presentation on the item and an overview of the background report. Ms. Madden?
Thank you, Chair. Good evening, Planning Commissioners. So this item before you this evening is a city-initiated application. You may remember earlier this year seeing the mini versions of the Transit Oriented Development District ordinance as we went through that work to take the Heart of the City ordinance and bring it up to a little bit of a more modern provisions, as well as kind of start that implementation process from our comprehensive plan. As in the 2040 comprehensive plan, the goal for Heart of the City was to review that zoning code in the surrounding area to determine how to bring a TOD-style district to the area and the build-out of extending Heart of the City. So this map that you can see on the screen is brought out from our 2040 comprehensive plan showing the potential future development of Heart of the City as it grows and expands. So the orange circles you can see there show the center of the two orange line bus rapid transit stations that are proposed to be constructed in the next year. Actually, the station at Highway 13 in Nicolet, they've begun. So it is currently an active site as of, I believe, this morning. So as part of this process to create this Transit Oriented Development District, this step this evening is establishing the boundaries of that zoning district. The chapter in the zoning ordinance, Chapter 22D, was approved on May, in May, by the city council. It exists in our city code. And these properties that we're going to go over in just a little bit are part of what's going to change to that district. It does include all of the existing Heart of the City, as well as properties that are within a walking distance of the new transit station that will be completed next year, and a few just neighboring commercial properties that were in the mix. So as part of the development of the new Transit Oriented Development District, our, we came up with a regulating plan for the parcels that are going to be within the district. So the boundaries here show the boundaries of the new Transit Oriented Development District. And all of the properties that you can see highlighted in black here on this map are what are proposed to be rezoned. The map here does show the current zoning of the properties and the future zoning of all returning or changing to this new transit TOD district. So the bulk of the properties that are changing are within the HOC 1 and the HOC 2 district. However, there are new properties on the west side of 35W, which were identified in the comprehensive plan as a future land use change to, to a mixed-use style transit pedestrian-oriented development because they were going to be so near the transit stations. There are also a few properties to the south of Burnsville Parkway that are currently zoned commercial that are proposed to be changed as well. By doing this, all of those southern, south of Burnsville Parkway properties that are zoned commercial are now part of the Transit Oriented Development District. So everything until it begins to back up to those residential properties. So as part of this process, city staff sent out informational letters to everyone who owned property within the target area that was proposed to be rezoned. As part of that process, we were giving them information on how to find out more information about what TOD is, when the change is, the timeline for when all of this is going to be happening. So we updated the, we reused the old website from when we were doing all of our engagement and surveys on creating the zoning district guidelines, and then used that to kind of continue to send out information to people. So primarily, we focused on just those who were going to own property that was changing. We held a virtual open house, which did not have much attendance, but had a lot of people asking me about how, how to attend. And then public hearing notices were sent out to everyone within 350 feet of the affected area. So within the last week, I've gotten about 11, I've had about 11 phone calls and three emails generally discussing tonight's action. So I'd say primarily, nobody wanted to provide public comment for or against. There weren't any people that I spoke with directly that felt that they needed to provide anything for the record. Generally, the questions were from people who owned property that were nearby that had questions about if there would be future street assessments, new financial consequences to something like this. There were some questions on if they needed to do anything in order to make this happen, or just if their input was needed at all. Questions about a timeline on when the transit stations were going to be constructed, when some of the proposed streets in the regulating plan might be constructed, and just where the new bus stations would be located. So a lot of it was general conversations, wanting to know what was happening because maybe many people weren't involved with the creation of the ordinance or these new people that are going to be part of what used to be Heart of the City just wanted some more information about it. But generally, positive feedback, a lot of people excited about the new orange line transit stations. So the next steps after tonight's item, there are going to be future text amendments to our comprehensive plan to adjust language for Heart of the City to Transit Oriented Development. Overall comprehensive plan, land use map amendments to change based on a combination of these changes. But there's also going to be future changes related to another goal in the comprehensive plan, which was for more mixed-use districts throughout Burnsville. So you will see that within the coming months. As well as the city attorney did comment on the ordinance that was prepared tonight that covers the rezoning, that the effective date will be upon final approval of the, by the Metropolitan Council. So that is not currently in the ordinance that is attached to your report. So I have made an adjustment to my recommendation that, that that statement that he requested will be added. Overall, staff is recommending approval of the zoning map amendment to the parcels that are provided, both in the map that was seen in this presentation and in the list of legal descriptions that's in your background packet this evening, presented with the additional language as suggested by our city attorney. This is a public hearing this evening, and I can stand for questions if needed.
Very good. Commissioners, any questions for Ms. Madden at this point? Very good. Commissioners, any questions for Ms. Madden at this point? Commissioner John?
Yeah, just curious on, so the district's not going to cross over Highway 13. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, so, yeah, everything else seems about what we talked about before, so that's all I have.
Okay, very good. So I will open the public hearing at 6:57 PM, and it does look like we have somebody in chambers here who would like to address the commissioner. So if you would, please just come up to the microphone, state your name and address for the record. You may, you may take it off.
Okay. Well, I didn't expect to speak tonight, but my name is Sandra Schleifer, and I'm a resident of Burnsville, as well as a business owner in the heart of the city of Burnsville. I own King &amp; Companies, which if you're familiar with that area, you are because some of these ordinances sound like they're going to be changing, and Cub Foods, you know where Nicola Plaza is, where everybody lives above, and then where the retail on the bottom. And 2007, I think, is when I bought my spot, so I was one of the first, if not the first, person to go in there. So I don't know if the businesses, so you said you had a lot of positive feedback, maybe? I mean, I do business in that area, and I don't think I've heard of anything from anybody having these discussions. So when I got the, I feel like I got a letter, so, in the mail. And then I'm like, what? What is going on? Now, granted, we also have COVID, right? So maybe I don't have all my i's dotted and t's crossed, right, for communication and being aware, because I'm just trying to run a business as well. So, I mean, Jensen's Cafe, did they give you positive feedback? Mediterranean Cruise, Cub Foods, King &amp; Companies, my company, The Chiropractor. I mean, we invested a lot of money in that heart of the city, and we get surcharged every year, special assessments for, somebody is going to choose to do some construction on a sidewalk, and all of a sudden, in September, I get a bill. And it's been going on the whole time. So now, I mean, Heart of the City in Burnsville, I mean, we, I went there, I chose to go there. Now it sounds like, when you're using past tense words, I guess I'm a little amiffed because I spent a lot of money. I mean, I have a mortgage and everything there on my commercial building. I own my space, so I don't lease my space, I own my space, as well as everybody else in that retail center. So if there are going to be vast changes, I think we maybe don't know about them. I could be the only one in the heart of the city that doesn't, and maybe it's just, again, like, I'm going to blame COVID, I don't want to do that, but being a mom, kids at school, you know, now at home, running a business, I just don't think, well, I wasn't aware of it, so maybe I'm the only silly person that wasn't, but I guess I'm really nervous of what my investment's going to look like. Am I going to be taxed more? In the heart of the city, we love the heart of the city. I mean, I put on the Music in the Park program as a volunteer for my family every Sunday night for, like, nine years. So we, as a family and a business community, really support that area. So now, if it's going to change, I mean, change is good, right? Change is good. We just don't know what it's supposed to look like, because I feel like we weren't involved in the conversation.
Thank you very much for your comments. We will be sure to ask some detailed clarifying questions of staff, just to get you a little bit more background on this.
Sure, thank you.
Thank you. All right, it does look like we have somebody on the Zoom call who would also like to speak, Brian Salmon. And if we can get him on the call, that would be great. And Brian, if you would-
Yep, I'm here.
Yep. Would you state your full name and address for the record, and then go ahead?
Yep, Brian Salmon. I'm over at 151 West Burnsville Parkway.
Okay, the floor is yours.
Okay, my question is, I know some things were going on. I, kind of like the other person I just talked, didn't know the extent of things going on. So I was honestly a little surprised at the extent of this TOD. But for myself, I need to know, so is this going to restrict future use of my building? I'm not really sure if I've had that, anyone talk about that. So am I going to be able to keep using, doing the use I do in the buildings I own? The other part is, is I went through the whole Cedarvale process 15 years ago, where the city made a plan, and then they decided to do the eminent domain, and they literally moved us out. Is that the plan for this, is to move to the new uses, or at a certain point, or be done? I need to know that for my future in this area. Those are my questions.
Thank you, Mr. Salmon. We'll make sure to address those questions and get some answers for you here. Thank you so much for joining us. Is there anybody else online or on the phone? And if you're on the phone, please dial *9 if you would like to raise your hand and contribute to the discussion. All right, I'm not seeing anybody else right now in chambers or on Zoom, so I am going to close the public hearing at 7:03. And if we have questions or any follow-up, we'll let you know, Mr. Salmon. And at this point, commissioners, what questions do you have? What questions did some of those comments spur? And what clarification type of questions should we ask of staff here? Commissioner John?
Yeah, so Ms. Madden, do you want to talk to what the differences are between our new TOD district comparison with the heart of the city?
Yes, commissioners. So the heart of the city is two things. Kind of what we're talking about tonight is specifically what the designation is on the zoning map, and not what Heart of the City is as part of, as part of a, like, focus area of the city and like a highlight of Burnsville. So it is still going to be called Heart of the City. Heart of the City will just exist inside of this Transit Oriented Development Zoning District. So the branding of it isn't changing at all. The reason that it's being rezoned to Transit Oriented Development is part of a policy initiative, but it's also playing off of the existing changes that we are seeing construction-wise for these transit stations for the orange line that's coming in. As far as change in restrictions, the Heart of the City code and the Transit Oriented Development code are very similar. So the development kind of boundaries for new development or redevelopment of properties, for the properties that are currently zoned HOC-1 or HOC-2, is largely the same. So that would include landscaping requirements, the building materials, setbacks, things like that. It's just that it's a newer ordinance as far as the way that staff will administer the ordinance. For restriction of uses, again, if you are in HOC-1 or HOC-2, one of those zoned properties currently, the variety of uses that are allowed is not changing with the update. If anything, there are a couple of things that are now allowed in Transit Oriented Development that were not previously allowed in Heart of the City. So there is a wider variety of what types of uses could go in if a building were to flip either tenants or redevelop completely. The largest changes that property owners are going to see are in those properties that are west of 35, because they are changing from mixed-use and commercial, and in one case, high-density residential, to go to Transit Oriented Development. And in that Transit Oriented Development District, all commercial uses are allowed, or the majority of commercial uses are allowed outside of, like, car lots and storage-type uses, as well as that high-density housing that you see in Heart of the City. So in most cases, the standards are, while they may be changing from an aesthetic standpoint, because of the look and feel and kind of pedestrian and bike-oriented goals that the city has for the Heart of the City area, generally, the zoning provisions are more broad, in that there are a wide variety of uses that can go in a district like this. So I hope that answers your question?
That really helps. I got a follow-up. So financially speaking, that was a couple of questions that came up. Are there any changes, are there new assessments or anything that business owners should be concerned about or aware of, given this turning over to a Transit Oriented District from the current Heart of the City District?
So there's not a direct impact on those type of financing concerns. That was a frequent question that came up during phone calls, particularly from residents that lived in the area that was affected by the Heart of the City special assessment. So that special assessment that is done throughout the engineering department and is put in place from a policy a very long time ago at the establishment of Heart of the City is not at all related to the boundaries of this new district. So there's no impact at all in either direction on special assessments with the proposed zoning change.
Other questions? Okay. So is it safe to say, then, that we're not turning Heart of the City and that moniker into the past tense, and that the city is still really pushing this neighborhood, for lack of a better term? And, I mean, this was a huge vision that the city took on and has really implemented, and in partnership with a variety of private businesses, you know, we've taken ownership of this area. And so is it safe to say that the idea of this is simply rezoning to bring in some of these businesses and properties on the west side of 35 and a few others, it looks like, on the east side of Nicolet, to really make it more standard in this area and almost make the heart of the city bigger?
That's correct. That's an excellent way of putting it. So speaking of Heart of the City, and the past tense is more, I guess, my vernacular that was affected there, because the Heart of the City is still going to remain Heart of the City, all of the branding, the way that it looks, the signage, none of that is changing, because Heart of the City is bigger than just what's on the zoning map. The zoning map in particular is what's changing to this Transit Oriented Development District so that we can encompass more properties within this that are so close to these new high-density transit and high-frequency transit stations that are going to be constructed next year.
And to just ask the straightforward question that Mr. Salmon asked, there's no intention on any type of taking or any plans like what happened in the Cedarvale area?
No, that is not a part of this initiative. The initiative is just for the existing land and the current boundaries that they have.
Very good. Thank you. All right, commissioners, any other questions or thoughts? Commissioner Ward?
Again, I, excellent presentation, and I'm supportive of the recommendation, so.
Thank you.
I'd be happy to make a motion if this is the time.
I would stand for that, yes.
Okay.
Sounds like a plan.
So I will recommend that we recommend, are we recommending approval to the city council? Or are we just approving the zoning map amendment ourselves?
You are recommending approval to the city council.
Okay, so, yes, I move that we recommend approval to the city council of the zoning map amendment of the parcels as listed in the provided ordinance with the attached, well, with the language that was added by the city attorney.
Before we take a second, and I'm sorry to put things on hold, but because of the timing of Zoom and the questions here, we did have a follow-up question.
Oh, sure, yeah.
And I will allow it from Mr. Salmon. So, Mr. Salmon, if you're still on the call, I'd happily hear your follow-up question.
Sure, thank you. Yeah, the question is a little bit about the map. I own a number of properties in that area, and oddly enough, all my properties on the map look considerably different. They all look like high-intensity housing. Is, was that just for aesthetic value, or was that kind of what, I even lease a place over in the Gateway area, and that is no longer going to be there either. So I'm just curious what the intention on that was.
I might need to ask you for more clarification, unless city staff can-
So on the Heart of the City potential redevelopment plan that was a part of the 2040 comprehensive plan update, our consulting group put together multiple scenarios of what people could do in the area based on what the zoning allows. So there are, in this case, the green and orange properties that are in between the two transit bubbles do show high-density residential there, where currently, there is an existing, well-established, multi-tenant commercial building. I believe that this is what the person on the call is referencing. So this is just to show conceptually what could be constructed in the zone, because now, in Heart of the City existing, as well as in the Transit Oriented Development, from a zoning standpoint, high-density construction is permitted, whether that's high-density office, commercial, or residential.
Mr. Salmon, does that address your question? It looks like it was a visualization of possible uses.
More for the looks than anything else. Okay, that helps out. I've been involved with, over the last 15 years, I've been involved with three eminent domains. That's why I'm concerned, because Valley Ridge, down on the other side of Burnsville over there, started out as a concept, moved into some other things, and then became an eminent domain situation. So I just want to be aware of what's going to be coming up.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Salmon. So again, to clarify, I mean, this was, this was just a rendering visualization, and I think you've answered the questions that Mr. Salmon's asked about his concerns with potential eminent domain, and that at this point, there's, this is simply a rezoning to Transit Oriented Development to help the, I guess, the universal neighborhood that we're looking at here?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so Commissioner Ward, I believe you have made a motion, and I would like a second, please.
I guess I'll second that.
All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. And the motion carries. This item will be on the city council's meeting next Monday, November 2nd, for final approval. And if there are any comments from anybody in the community, you can submit those by Friday of this week at 4:30 to City Hall. All right, moving on, we will go to item number five, which is also a public hearing, and it piggybacks a little here. It's an application of the City of Burnsville for an ordinance amendment to remove Title 10-22B Heart of the City zoning chapter in its entirety and remove reference to Heart of the City from Title 10, 749, 102912, 103015, 10617112, and 337. And Ms. Madden will take this as well.
Thank you. So as mentioned by Chair Timmerman, the next item is related to the recommendation for the zoning map amendment from the previous item. So this is an ordinance amendment to remove the Heart of the City chapter from the zoning code and change references from Heart of the City, HOC, to TOD within various titles across the city code. So the public hearing is specifically about those that are in Title 10, which is the zoning chapter, which the planning commission has the authority to make recommendations on and hold public hearings for, but there are some changes in the attached ordinance in other titles. But they are, this is considered housekeeping in nature, very minor. It's just changing the referencing from district to district. And based on some of the comments we've received on the last item about Heart of the City as an area and Heart of the City as a zoning district, just to clarify, this does not remove reference of Heart of the City from the city's goals and policies that exist or our marketing strategy, just from the zoning map and zoning chapter. As maybe an example of where we see this elsewhere in the city, the industrial area where the landfill and some of those surrounding properties are located are called the Minnesota River Quadrant in our comprehensive plan, but their zoning district is actually called, you know, it's I for industrial, or something like that. So the zoning does not necessarily equal the goals and policies of the city for our target areas, such as the Minnesota River Quadrant and Heart of the City. So, to move on, so the proposed changes this evening with the ordinance included in your background packet are basically removing any location where there are code references throughout the code that say "in" Chapter 22B HOC, and changing it to 22DTOD, as well as removal of 22B from the zoning ordinance and saving the chapter for future use. The one change that's part of this, that you'll see that isn't just a removal of a reference, is in the density section of Title 10. And in that section, the proposed density is changing from 20 to 60 to 20 to 80, and that is what was outlined in the Transit Oriented Development District that was approved in May by the city council. So the recommendation this evening, staff is recommending that the planning commission recommends to the city council approval of the proposed ordinance amendment to adjust and modify these requirements. Oh, I've got the wrong one.
Do that one right.
Wrong recommendation.
Just get it out.
Don't do that one yet. Recommending approval to incorporate changes that remove reference from the, from the HOC to the TOD district. This is a public hearing this evening, and I can stand for questions. So the sections that, I've got it wrong in my PowerPoint, but the recommendation is correct in your background packet, so to remove Title 10-22B and then remove reference from HOC in multiple titles throughout the city code and replace with 22D, which is the Transit Oriented Development District. and replace with 22D, which is the Transit-Oriented Development District.
Thank you, Ms. Madden. Questions? All right, seeing none, I will open the public hearing on this item at 7:19. I don't see anybody in chambers who would like to speak to this item. I will wait just one moment to see if anybody on Zoom does. If you would, press star nine to raise your hand if you would like to speak to this item. All right, it doesn't look like we have anyone on Zoom either. So, Commissioners, discussion, motion? Commissioner John?
Yeah, I just wanted to say, I appreciate Ms. Schaffler coming in today and, and bringing up those, those questions she had. I think that if, if I was reading this too, I would, I would feel the same way about it. And I'm, I'm glad that we're just making a quick code change. With that, I would like to make a motion.
Uh, can I pause you right there? We did have somebody, sorry.
Oh.
We did have somebody. I'm going to reopen the public hearing at 7:20 and we have somebody on Zoom who would like to speak. I have Patty. I don't have a last name, but if we could get Patty on, please.
Hi, I just have a quick question.
Yes, would you please state your name and address for the record? And then you may ask your question.
Oh, it's 401 East Burnsville Parkway.
Patty, what's your last name?
Dylan.
Dylan, thank you. Go ahead.
Is, the last point that she made about, I don't, I can't repeat the vernacular, but it seems to me that you're wanting to decrease the occupancy to parking ratio. Is that, is that my, is that a correct understanding?
I may need clarification. Are you referencing the chart that I talked about in my PowerPoint?
No, I'm refer, referencing your comment, like the 2060 to 2080, the.
Uh, yes, so what that is in reference to is, is not related to parking, but is related to the allowed number of units of housing per acre. So it's actually increasing. The current range is between 20 units and 60 units per acre for the Heart of the City zoning district. And the new zoning district is between 20 units and 80 units per acre.
So what does that refer to, square footage or? I'm, I'm trying to understand what that actually impacts.
That would impact the number of residential units on a piece of property for new construction or for major remodeling or redevelopment of a, of a site.
So like if an apartment complex was going in, it, the, it would be able to have more units?
That's correct.
So necessarily smaller units?
They would need to meet the minimum unit size, which we do, I don't have it before me this evening, but we do have provisions related to square footage in our, in our city codes and ordinances.
Okay, that helps me a lot, thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Dylan. Okay, so I'm going to close unless I see somebody else here, and I do. So I'm going to pause for Sandy. Sandy, when you get on, please state your first and last name and your address.
Hello, Sandy Duque. The address is 3112 Marcia Anne Lane, Burnsville. And I had a question regarding that last slide. When you talked about density and you clarified that to mean units or houses, it was my understanding that R1A had a minimum of two acres. One acre was grandfathered in, and the way I'm reading this is it's .05 to 1.0 unit per acre. Am I viewing this incorrectly or is this being reduced from two acres to one acre?
Uh, on this particular slide, I don't believe there's any change to the R1A, but I will let Ms. Madden or Ms. Garros.
Thank you.
Speak to this.
There is no change overall related to the R1A zoning district in terms of the city's comprehensive plan, which was adopted a couple of years ago for 2040. There were some density changes that were made and those have been incorporated into the ordinance. The minimum lot size has not changed. So we still have a minimum lot size if you do not have city sewer and water of two acres of dry buildable land. So that has not changed. I think overall, in the R1A zone, if you have public utilities, you can develop at a higher density, which gets you to that .5 to, I can't read that. To one unit per acre. That's assuming you have city sewer and water available. With city sewer and water, you're able to have higher density. But most of the properties do not have city sewer and water, so they still follow the two-acre requirement for areas without, or areas that are on septic system and well.
Okay, and, and this doesn't affect that at all?
No, it does not.
I realize that you said that it was implemented a while ago with the new city services.
This was, the densities were modified somewhat in the zoning ordinance and in the comprehensive plan when they were updated. But this is still reflective of basically what's always been available in the R1A area. It just, this particular chart doesn't make the, doesn't state that you could have, one is with city sewer and water and the lower density is without. So this is really reflective of the highest that you could have. The 0.5 to one acre would be with city sewer and water, and that's the same as it's been for many, many years. And then likewise, if you do not have city sewer and water, then your density is, you have to have a two-acre minimum lot size for one home.
Okay, all right, thank you for the clarification.
Sure.
Yes, thank you for your question. And I will pause here before I close the public hearing. I don't remember if I opened it or, I know I've opened it more than once, but I will close at 7:27. And Commissioner John, if you would, please continue with your recommendation.
Yeah, I, I will make a motion. That we recommended the city council approval of the ordinance amendment to remove Title 10, 22B Heart of the City zoning chapter in its entirety and remove reference to HOC from Title 10, 749, 102912, 103015, 1061, 7112, and 337 and replace with reference to Title 10, 22D, Transient-Oriented Development, TOD, district as drafted.
I will second that motion.
Thank you. So we have a motion by Commissioner John, second by Commissioner Ward. All those in favor, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. And the motion carries. To all of you who joined us tonight on these items, thank you very much. I know that with these, it, it's a long process to make a, a significant zoning change like this, and this is still not the end of that. This will go on to the city council meeting, which will be next Monday, November 2nd. And I believe then there will also be some follow-up with the Met Council that will be required in order to get final approval on this item. And that was what our city staff alluded to with the effective date of this is it will be after the Met Council sees this and ultimately approves it. Okay. So with that, we will move on to the next item, which is item number six on the agenda. Item number six is another public hearing and it is an application of the city of Burnsville for a zoning ordinance amendment to Title 10, zoning chapter 30A, landscape requirements to incorporate changes related to landscaping requirements on multifamily, commercial, mixed-use, and industrial lots and to modify requirements for the installation of building perimeter landscaping. And it looks like we will have Ms.
Mr. Brixius, Albrexius.
Mr. Brixius?
I'm going to introduce the item.
Ms. Madden? The floor is yours.
Thank you for bearing with us. So this last item on this evening's agenda will again be a public hearing. This is related to two items that were on the Planning Commission 2020 work plan, which was discussed at your last meeting on September 28th, where we had a commission consensus to move forward with the ordinance that was drafted at that time. And it has not changed since that draft that was provided at that meeting, but has been put into more of the, the formal nature, which you can see in your background report this evening. So the new draft ordinance provides some flexibility in our regulations, the city's regulations for the installation of plant materials, some greater choice in materials and design options for both building perimeter landscaping and in our plant material requirements for open space on properties. Some increased administrative, which is staff approval options for us to utilize as tools in the zoning code. And it, but it does maintain the extensive ordinance provisions for landscaping that we have here in the city of Burnsville, which gets us some high-quality results. So our planning consultant, Albrexius, will speak to this item this evening. Thank you.
Commissioners, as discussed, we looked at this in September and we've moved ahead to bring this ordinance in your packet. You have the formal ordinance in front of you. When we looked at this, we are looking at these landscape requirements, specifically the plant diversity. And you note that the plant diversity here outlines the number of plants that are required based on open area. The issue that we have with the current code is open area is not defined. So the changes we're looking at is to establish criteria that can be subtracted from the open area. These areas are either not available for planting on or planting areas, such as the stormwater ponds, wetlands, utilities containing pipelines and overhead transmission lines where the, where the plantings may actually interfere with that utility. Steep slopes, woodland preservation areas. And then our previous definition just included building parking lots and other impervious areas. If we just base it on letter F, then we have a lot of area that has to generate a, a landscape count but does not really support an area for those areas. So that was, that is the first change, is that we introduced the definition of open space as part of the code. The second element that we also incorporated under plant diversity was that we're providing 25% of diversity, but we're also subtracting or allowing for parking areas or buffer areas to be counted against the number of required plantings. And that's what this deletion would be include. The next element we talked about is building perimeter landscaping. You can see the current deletion that we're taking out the 50% of parking lot or building perimeter being sodded, landscaped, or approved ground cover. And we're replacing it with two alternatives, the building perimeter landscaping for multiple-family office, clinic, daycare, and restaurants or industrial sites. We retain the 50% of the building perimeter. But we also added that a reduction could occur if there are alternative landscape options such as aesthetic design in accordance with a, a provision that's already in the code, to be located within 10 feet of the building wall. This allows some flexibility in, in additional design components. If there's a plaza, larger hardscape component that is attractive and maintained, it can result in a reduced requirement for our, our landscaping. We've also looked at multi-tenant, commercial, retail, on-sale, service retail businesses, shopping centers. And based on what we examined as far as on a site-by-site basis, we found that most of ours, shopping centers did not meet the 50% requirement. It's primarily due to bringing parking lots in close proximity to the front doors and loading areas and other activity areas at the rear of the building. So what we're asking you to look at tonight is a reduction for these type of uses to 30% of the total building perimeter. But again, we also allow for a reduction in that percentage where we allow for alternative landscape options, aesthetic design in accordance with the code. Again, this is an opportunity to use hardscape as a means of being aesthetically pleasing and plaza areas, seating areas, those type of features. Additionally, under aesthetic design would be elevated planting boxes, which could also fill both needs. Then on the buffer yards and, and parking areas, we're basically have modified this to allow these trees and shrubs to be counted toward the overall landscape count. Same holds true for the landscape or parking landscaping. Currently, your, your code requires a landscape plan. It has a landscape count, parking lot landscaping, buffer yards, woodland protections, heat reductions, perimeter plantings, and minimum green space for our commercial industrial areas. I don't think the changes that we're proposing will influence any of the functional requirements as far as screening because we still have them outlined very specifically in our code. But it will allow for a greater reduction and be more site-specific as far as the, the proposed landscaping. If there's any questions, I'll try to respond.
Very good. Commissioners, any questions? Commissioner John?
Like I, I remember the last time we, we talked about this, this just makes sense. It's the best way to roll. We're just improving our already, our regulations and any changes that we, we need to make, we can through a variance or anything along those lines, correct?
Mr. Brixius, thank you for being here again. Is it safe to say that this is clarifying the ordinance and taking some burden off of property owners because we're considering some of those spaces in the open spaces definition that we once weren't?
I believe that in the past, we've granted variances in some cases where we had woodland preservation or we had steep slopes. And quite frankly, if, if those areas are to be reserved and undisturbed, counting them as, as far as plant locations, we have a lot of overcrowding. And while some cities require a, a cash in lieu of the plants, it's not something I'd recommend because you'd be using the plant someplace else and I don't think it's a reasonable or legal application.
Good, thank you.
I'm speaking for your city attorney, though.
Everyone's entitled to opinion.
Yes, yes.
All right, this is a public hearing, so I will open it at 7:37 PM. And it does not look like we have anybody in chambers who wishes to speak to this. If there is anybody on Zoom who's on the telephone, if you would press, I have to remind myself here, star nine? Star nine to raise your hand to notify our moderator if you'd like to speak. All right, I do not see anyone on Zoom. So Commissioners, any discussion? Do you have to close this, close the public hearing? Yes, thank you. I will close the public hearing at 7:38. Commissioner Ward?
Again, great presentation. Thank you for kind of giving our, you know, giving us more options, really. And I'm supportive of the recommendation.
Commissioner John?
I agree with that. Thanks to everything you guys have done. And I'm going to go ahead and make that recommendation.
If the recommendation's just, you can adopt the ordinance as in the packet because they have, the staff has already outlined it for you and it's, and I think that's, contains everything.
Okay.
You got it?
Yeah. I think we just move forward with, with these changes. And staff will prepare the ordinance for our public hearing at the next planning commission meeting. Is there, I don't think that, that's about it, right?
No, I think we have a...
Do you have a draft ordinance in your packet? I just recommend that, go forward to the council, that's what we're looking for.
I don't, go ahead.
I'd be happy to make the recommendation, yeah. So, I move that we recommend to the City Council approval of the proposed ordinance to city code Title 10, zoning, chapter 30A, landscape requirements to incorporate changes related to landscaping requirements on multifamily, commercial, mixed-use, and industrial lots, and to modify requirements for the installation of building perimeter landscaping.
Commissioner John?
I'll do the easy roll, I will second that.
Thank you, Commissioner John, we'll save the seconds for you.
That sounds good.
All right, any further discussion? Thank you for the work, this is, this is a nice change, I do think it makes life easier for developers and applicants down the road, so. With no further discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay, and the motion carries. All right, thank you. Okay, so that brings us to updates, and sorry, this item too will be on the City Council meeting next Monday, November 2nd for final approval. Updates, Commissioners, any updates?
No.
No updates from the Commissioners, any updates from staff?
Yes, so typically, your next Planning Commission meeting, you would have two per month, on the second and fourth Monday of the month. Your next meeting will be canceled on November 9th. So the next time that you'll come into City Hall for a meeting will be November 23rd. And so that will be the week of Thanksgiving, right now, it looks like we're going to have two items on that meeting. The first will be a continuation of the building expression topic that we talked about a few months ago. We may have an ordinance actually to look at. And the second item, we do have a development application for a, I hope I'm getting it right, but I want to say an 82-unit apartment building in an R3B-zoned property, or proposal to rezone to R3B elsewhere in the city, off of County Road 5. So that application should be scheduled on the November 23rd meeting. And then I do not have any further updates, do you?
No.
And that's all.
Excited for the building expression conversation and ordinance. I visited my sister in Florida and actually saw a building, and I never would have noticed it, but the entire side of it said, "Timmerman." So my sister, I said, "That is not signage, that is building expression."
Which city?
It was near Fort Myers.
Okay.
So it was off the 95, so. It stood out to me at least. Okay, so we are going to move towards adjournment, and I would just like to remind folks that members of the public can submit additional public comment related to any of the items at this evening's Planning Commission until 4:30 PM on Friday this week, October 30th. These comments will be included with the City Council background for further consideration at their meeting on Monday, November 2nd. At this time, I'd like to request a call for adjournment to our meeting this evening.
I'll go ahead and make that motion.
I will second the motion.
All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, oppose say nay, and the motion carries. We adjourn, thank you all.